The City of Perry is a work session for October the 15th, 2022. We have a board. Item 3 is for items for human discussion. If you will bear with me, I would like to reorder the agenda for this evening because of some time constraints. If we could, Mr. Smith, we can move your presentation until last. If it would be okay with you. We will have the Department of Community Development up in the Department of Public Works. Department of Labor Services and then the presentation on water first program. If that's okay with everybody. Item 3A is Department of Community Development. 3A 1 is consider option 2 to staff this street driveway. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor members of council. As you know, there's property on South Street, 203 South Street. The council surplus donated to Land Bank earlier this year. Land Bank has that property under contract with a potential developer of the West Side. They have been working through their diligence period and have put a set plan in front of each of you. They're looking at how they can do the South Side responsibility to the Land Bank that they also desire. I have offered a plan, a different plan than this, and there's a different part on their side. But they asked whether or not the city would consider allowing overflour parking in the South Street driveway. And what I've provided you, in front of you, is just a cut and paste kind of way of showing you approximately how many parking spaces. Their potential building, water line, that's about 15. So that is the purchaser's request, whether or not you would consider that. Also, just minutes ago, Mr. Gilmore suggested that maybe rather than putting parking in the driveway, they maybe would shift their intention upon certain portion of that is the driveway. And therefore, potentially be able to get a parking on their side. So I wanted to bring that to your attention for discussion. Did want to point out that there are some utilities in that portion of the South Street driveway. There's a 12-inch water main that runs down both sides of the driveway as well as 8-inch sewer line on the, I believe, the southeast side of the driveway. Additionally, there is a little parcel directly across South Street from this, which would need to maintain access to that one. And finally, to support the question is whether we would acquire this driveway or whatever this is, whether that should be built as a city street in as far as the parking or other facilities that are on the driveway, how would we deal with maintenance on that? Whether there should be used by the owner or whoever's somebody connects? That's the question.
Council members, questions concerning your local community?
This South Street, is it one-way or is it a practical one-way?
It's a two-way street. It does, the driveway does extend all the way to Larry Wallen Parkway. However, on the street itself does not cut all the way through. I would suspect that we would not connect that in the future. Particularly with this site that's a curb cut from Judge D O T. I doubt there will be a way for us to provide a sufficient curb cut connection here. So I think that this will be a day, more likely be a day in the street. So I don't think that the amount of traffic on the street will create an issue in that part. You may have thought, well, you're, you're, you're not going to. They have been advised, they need to talk to Judge D O T about the curb cut and remake any discussions. I don't remember where that stands right now on that, but that's pretty common.
What they give you, they do about it, right?
Right, I think, I think that if they get a curb cut, then more than likely we would not, they would not get another curb cut that close to this one.
So who would maintain and ownership of the driveway? I mean, that's my concern. Gilmore?
Well, I think right now, city houses, the, there is the possibility that the city would consider, the possibility that you would abandon that portion. However, if you do that, typically, when you abandon, it's pretty hard to give property on the side of that portion. So by doing that, you would, at least in this layout, cause this developer to have to work with adjacent property on access to it. So I guess my, my thought was that the city would maintain, maintain our Blackway, but look at some way of requiring development to actually maintain water spaces for the intention upon that's actually on the same line.
You have more, you have thoughts on this?
Mayor and council, particularly based on the fact about that parcel on the other side has that access. Let me see, we're trying to talk on the other side of the drive. I think Mr. Wood's proposal is the best one, that he would not give up the driveway, but authorize the owners to have the parking and put in the street, just as he has laid out there. And that'd be their responsibility to maintain. Because there could be a problem, like Brian said about the water line, having to move the stormwater pond over.
In the agreement, obviously, we still have to, because of the utilities there, we have to handle the, so regarding us being able to maintain our utility lines. Also, between, neither Mr. Wood, stormwater. Now, boxes are, how is it that we have to stay away from those, out of the layout?
Is that a general knowledge, lack of knowledge question? The size of the intention upon, I don't think it will take the whole answer, but how is that determined? Like, what was it that caused this to have to be so large?
So that's based on the amount of damage coverage that they are putting on the side. And their calculations determine how much rainfall equals, how much rainfall that creates. They have to develop a stormwater pond that hold the amount of rainfall that they're going to receive. So that, that's kind of, that's how we, how we.
Are they, are they going to make improvements themselves on the city property? Is that what I was hearing?
That's not understanding, that's how, the city is, is their responsibility to make improvements.
Do we typically, do we have to allow somebody else to develop on, on the city property?
I don't, I'm not aware of anything, other than when developers are doing that with the expectation of donating the, the improvements to the city. But I'm not aware of anything here, something like this may happen.
That was supposed to be, there's something, don't make this city's.
That's certainly an option, it's a way all cities are interested in maintaining. So that's an option, or they develop, or maintain themselves on top of the policy.
Who would have a lot of ability for this? If it's developed on the city driveway, some happening there, who's going to be responsible?
I think that the city would likely be responsible and potentially develop, you know, since it's mostly on.
One question. If the, on the South Street, the road won't be really open, but the bike company go through it, I'm not sure if it's good enough. It's going to be winding up, but if you truck a hand there, and a five hundred big truck, can it get it into it?
I would, that would be something that we'll have to look at during the interview. But it looks like what they're showing here is an extension of the existing, of existing street, which I'm assuming is satisfactory to the property, but we have to.
So what do you mean from us?
I guess what I'm looking for is whether or not you would consider allowing some house property to be in the driveway. And under what circumstances?
So Mr. Gilmore, on the opinion that you felt like this is the best alternative at this point in time?
Yes, sir, I think that it would, provided that there could be a favorable lease agreement for both parties. The other thing I think that's important to keep in mind, too, is, is that this route coming in on South Street is going to have to be the restaurant main route if they don't get an okay from D O T to have a curb cut. You may remember there's been some issues about whether D O T will issue that or not. So we would want to give it away, Mr. Smith.
Council members, what other questions do we have related to this recommendation? This is a follow-up to that, Mayor. I have, I have been really kind of love this project, I should ask, please, by allowing, just allow this to be presented in a press, like, or.
It could, but, you know, excuse me, you review these items on an individual basis, based on what you determine to be in the public's best interest. And since in this particular case, it's being recommended, you're not giving up or getting rid of any city property, you're just allowing someone to come in, subject to certain conditions. And I'm sure the city attorney would require that there be a murder clause, you know, the circumstances were to change.
I guess, you mentioned, you mentioned, you mentioned, you need this one, too.
Yes, it could be a reason for it. Right. Because I think you would, one, because you have utilities there, two, because you don't know necessarily what's going to happen in the future. Then, then you would want to keep your options open relative to taking it back and determining whatever it is you need to do.
We're only talking about the property where the easement is.
Sorry?
We're only talking about the property where the easement is.
Correct. That's right, we're not, we're not talking about anything else, just a stretch.
It has been purchased.
But that's the sometime leasing.
No, I mean, the, the developer, have they purchased that property?
They are under contract right now in their new diligence period.
Okay.
If I could add to Mr. Gilmore's comments in relation to Councilmember Jones's question. I think, you know, judicial looking at, you know, a case-by-case basis, in this particular case, looking at essentially dead as street, here, that, that. Which, I don't know, I often see that in times of change.
Council members, other questions? The purpose, the curb recommendation allowance, would move forward with this negotiation? So we have the current, we call it, overpart, having your hermitage come back to you, thank you. I'm sorry, you're welcome. Item 3A 2 is naming of a building, Mr. Wood.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council, at the last work session of the address manager had recommended a name for the redeveloped building. And I believe, so, Councilman Peterson, asked for something that would facilitate, that actually occurs in the building. We put together several ideas and wrote those down personally. And based on our comments, well, we're ready to name the buildings, to planning, engineering, building services.
Council members?
Mayor, I do feel like I have a council meeting person in there, or something. I would, I would. Yes, I can go along with that.
You recommended the name of the community development and put the activity in the smaller letters underneath. That's certainly not even true. Comments or something? I think it may have been. So council members, would you prefer? That could be. You know, it's a referendum, didn't you? Right. You have any terms to go to your referendum to name? Thank you. Next on the agenda is Department of Public Works, and that's item 3C 1, that's Road or Park Hold, in there. Mr. Smith?
What I want to see this evening is a proposal for contract services and staff recognition in reference to the storm drainage pipe, the entry drive to Red River and Royal Center and P Drive. This is the pipe that we're talking about here. The proposal comes from Utility Asset Management, which would be a sole source contractor. They successfully completed some similar pipe repair projects for the city management. This proposal was reviewed by the city engineer, Mr. Noreen, and our consulting engineer, G W B M. They both first, they need approval based on a few factors. The first one being, there's a window of time that your pipe is eligible for repair, based on the structural integrity of the pipe and the ability to that repair surface to adhere to the pipe structure that's already there. So as you can see, that's significant damage to this pipe. Once we get beyond that window of eligible for repair, then it would require renewal and replacement. And pipes this size, 77 inches, they don't make them anymore. So it would require two pipes that could handle the same capacity of flow. That would mean we have to tear out the end walls, replace them, enclose them to the park in order to do all of that work and then repair the entry drive above. So we don't anticipate there being any cost savings of waiting and repairing it later, and there wouldn't be any obstruction to the current flow of traffic to from the park. We would have to close Royal Center in order to do it. So, just my words here, if there are any more technical questions, but otherwise, if any general questions might have.
Council member? I think we did this now, the council points to the Scott. Why is it a little bit fair?
It might have been a gap.
No, it was, it was the same.
That's what I thought, yes.
This is, this is something, the driveway going in to the park, it still have that Z, all the doors, it's, it's. Coming to the great office, the hardware.
If the rent would speak to be only, is it better for more?
Not if you concur. This is a, this is a sole source. You may remember, we went out and bid, the project you referenced, and there was only one bidder that responded to it. It is less than the state park level relative to Public Works. And our recommendation, based on the mobilization time, experience and everything, would be to go with this contract.
You have a current, you have a current new offer? Thank you very much. Item 3D, it's Department Labor Services. 3D 1 is considering offering, not by you, but by the offer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the purpose of this proposal, as you know, is to discuss an alternative to canceling the winter sports. I'm sure that you have a presentation with your board back. But regardless of winter sports, we just want to demonstrate to our union stakeholders, our citizens, that we have done all the proper research and presented and exhausted all options in alternative to canceling winter sports, which is basketball. I wanted to provide some recommendations and modify our offerings. And most importantly, I just want y'all to know, this is not a challenge to the decision of canceling winter sports. I just want to make sure I presented the information. All right, our concerns, of course, is balance, safety and service. Well, notified of the decision in council winter athletics. I don't want to speculate, but I do feel that our decision in council fall sports was intended to cancel winter sports as well. And like I said, I don't want to speculate, but I think that's where the future came. Because if we were going to cancel basketball, winter sports, fall separately. So basketball is covered in winter, so we should extend it, possibly in January. And on our website, it states that we would do, it has notice of cancellation for fall sports. And then immediately after that's basketball, in October, the registration, you know, we're going forward. And I knew that we were going to come back and reassess our offerings and, you know, feasibility of our, in October. So I think it's where the future came. From the city's standpoint, which I respectfully understand, we want to make sure, I think our concern is more so our ability to protect our patrons. You know, and of course, our youth that participate, but being enclosed, being within enclosed spaces and trying to follow social distancing guidelines is presented a challenge. So from the citizen's side, I've spoken to several communities, several citizens, and they explained, expressed their interest in playing basketball this year. And they're noticing that high school had a fairly successful football season in the period. And then other agencies are advertising registration in the surrounding area. So I wanted to, if nothing else, show that I brought the information to Mayor and Council and we discussed it. I guess it's a three-part solution. First of all, first part would be adhering to the guidelines. Now, these guidelines are set by C E C, by the D C E C and the governor's office. We get executive orders, so often. Currently, they're asking that we don't have any gatherings over 50 people, if you cannot recognize, if you can't adhere to social distancing guidelines. They're asking that you check temperatures as we do come into the council meetings, and that you impose wearing masks for all your patrons. And looking for those participants that are not active in sport at the time, including the referee. G H S A, the Georgia High School Sports Association, they have done a couple adjustments to the operation of actual basketball proceedings. They removed the jump ball from the basketball. One team would just start off putting in bounds play. You sanitize the basketball several times throughout the games and referee position, and they have spread out referees further. And this is just to show that we're doing our research, we're making sure we understand and are trying to diagnose where we do this. Second part of our proposal is to adjust operations. And that includes limiting the amount of patrons that come in. We wanted to issue two tickets per child. Of course, set up a welcoming area like we have here in our facility, where patrons would check in, the tickets would check walking in. And we've already placed, now the X's don't, don't necessarily represent the exact places, but we have found that we can have 40 people within our facility, 40 people in the stands. The yellow X's that you seen in presentation, that represents the bench area. We're going, the plan is, the proposal is reduce the size of teams to only eight players. We have five on the court and three on the bench. So we'll have adequate amount of space, space around six feet, as recommended. In addition, we wanted to ask the flow of the building. You come in the front entrance, the Royal Center, leading into the gym, and at the end of the games, we ask our patrons to go out to the rear deck. And at that time, we would sanitize, we have a program, we currently sanitize our football equipment. We will go through the facility and sanitize with that instrument. Video streaming, this is something innovative, something that we've noticed other agencies doing. They incorporated video systems into the recreation parks. So, you know, as I mentioned before, you asked, you were issuing only two tickets to each place. And that could be, that could be a headache at some times, I mean, you know, especially would be a point of conflict. I would say be a point of conflict. But it's to mitigate any of that conflict. You could, with the video streaming portion, you're able to give access to those grandparents, those parents that are out of town. We are a military family, military community. You might have, excuse me, you might have a parent that's deployed, that have access to our, to see their child play, participate in our sports. Funding piece is the most important part. I found that average price is about $2,000, $2,500 to $5,000 for implementation. But with most of the systems, they have funding options, where you can pass in the cost to registration. With my estimate, I think it'd be additional $12, $15 per registration. So per participant, additional $12, $15. And then there's opportunities for sponsorships. We have these pretty innovative systems that allow you to cut commercials. You can actually sell advertising slots, 15-second commercials. And we spoke with a few of our stakeholders in the community that would be interested in sponsoring video streaming portion of it, if council sees it. And like I said, I want to follow up and venture, but this is not an argument, it's not a rebuttal. This is, I want to age, I want to give you all all the information that I found in our field. My job in the recreation market, find all alternatives and do my research and come to y'all with the proposal. So if you have any questions, it's now.
Council members? Set a, you might want to specific on the basketball season to start.
Basketball season will actually start January.
Council members? One question, I want you, I think, I guess each hour, after they have a bathroom, for an hour of flow, playing basketball, right?
Yes, sir.
So how do you want to afford that to keep your bathroom?
With, with staff. And if we, uh, all hands don't think, say, we will have to utilize all of our staff members to practice their basketball.
And we're going to need to protect the high school relative to the practice streaming. Do you want us to be there to order, they're going to require from us to clean their facilities and everything after we introduce you?
So, the discussion we've had with, uh, the school system, they are restricting access to many outside entities, of course. So, we've, uh...
Can I ask the question, the follow-up question?
Yes.
Where are you going to do your practicing? You've got 300, 300 young men and men and women that potentially on play. And we've utilized those facilities over the last several years or so.
So, the goal is to, uh, use the rest of this year after registration ends to hold most of our practices at the Wolf Center in our facility. And we'll have to, uh, we'll have to include Wednesday nights and Friday nights of practice. Normally, those are days that we don't, um, practice or hold any activity traditionally. So, we, we, we thought of that and, um, presented the, an alternative schedule. And we will have to go, uh, every day from the place.
So, you kind of want to convince you working somewhere to find a way for these kids to, to have organized competitive sports. I'm all for it.
Another question. Have you got feedback on your mail, what they think?
Yes, sir. So, that's what originally started this, uh, email that I sent Mr. Gilmore. Uh, we had a few parents come in and, and we, we were thinking about offering skills and drills for part of what we're just doing, shooting. And we were trying to figure out how feasible it was, how we can have the operations of basketball in our facility. And that didn't go well. There, uh, citizens weren't interested in shooting rounds or in skills, skills development. They were interested in playing basketball. So, after hearing that many times, I said, okay, I need to pass this information on. And I sent the email to Mr. Gilmore.
Senator, if we were to do it, would you perceive the fees needing to go up in competition costs relative to situation we find ourselves in?
Outside of the actual video streaming, I think our costs would be just about the same. Uh, we spoke with our referee and association. Their fees haven't changed. I think that's one of our larger fees normally is referees. And they haven't budged any. So, I think the, the addition of our video streaming component is going to add an additional cost.
So, who's going to run your video streaming?
It is, it is, uh, what's the word? Automated. It actually is set up and captures by itself and streams automatically. It's, uh, they'll be proof. I can't, I can't mix it up.
The camera operation, of course. Somebody's got to facilitate the operator, the camera.
Yes, sir. So, with the system, they have, uh, scheduled times that the cameras come on. And you mount it, you know, you know, in a fifth, this used to be a gymnasium. You would mount it at the top of the center court. And, uh, the picture is wide enough to capture the entire gymnasium floor. And, uh, they have, uh, the option to commentate, to, um, add scores. And, uh, even one of the, I guess, the most, most interesting parts of it, that you can, uh, you can embed, you'll get a website that's dedicated to just streaming. So, we can, uh, actually just go to that website. But you can actually, as a, as a viewer, download that video and watch it again until it's... So, if you were out of town, if you were at work, you can come back and watch. I'll play it for you.
Mr. Gilmore, you have a recommendation I know that we have talked about.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I applaud Mr. Swan and his efforts to bring this program forward, but the administration's recommendation is still no. Uh, the concerns that, that I have with it is number one, you know, the governor's order has been extended again. And the cases of COVID are going up nationwide and also in Georgia. And this is an indoor type of function. I think there's going to be potentially some scheduling issues or problems since we're only going to have the one gym, the rural center, to handle practices and games. In addition to that, uh, particularly in basketball, there are very enthusiastic parents and guardians that like to watch the game. And I can see where you potentially could have some problems when you talk about limiting it to one or two people per participant, uh, with the event. In addition to that, uh, some of the council members may remember, we've had people come in talking about how high the basketball program fees are already. And to come back in and add additional money for the video streaming. And we could have some participants who aren't able to participate in that because they don't have the hardware, the connection home, whatever the case may be. Uh, you know, I think you're going to be causing some issues. I understand a lot of people are interested in getting back to regular time, for lack of better terms. Uh, but, uh, administration-wise, we don't see regular terms coming back anytime soon. And we think it's incumbent upon the city to not provide the program at this time.
I have just want to ask about your budget overall. I would think it's had a tremendous decrease in your spending over the last several months. It's been unable to do any higher sport activities. So, um, the money for the live streaming shouldn't be, should take a hit. I mean, your budget will take a hit because of that. And, um, and it might even be such that, you know, you don't have to add that to the choice. It's inspiring to me. And also, others would say that as far as access to the streaming, so much education has come, uh, through streaming. Most homes even now have, have that asking for our school systems and everybody. So, you know, I think if you want something to work badly enough, I just think, I just sick the kids don't have this sort of thing. And if adults can be adults, then let those kids go there and play basketball.
Well, yes, from my perspective, being mayor, this is a city's launch of programs, it's our video programs. We have made some very, very difficult decisions since March. And there are a large number of people, um, who have viewed, but many adults have suffered from what's happened in the council program. We have just notified everybody that were canceling the budget, probably the largest event that we have ever seen. And out of the talking, for sake. And I think this time, Grace, in talking to her this afternoon, uh, her comment, you know, she always likes to have a headline, is that it's safety before circus. She has great concerns about the safety of, you know, everybody that's participating. Um, I think that, you know, I agree with Ms. Peterson. I'd love to get back to normal. I'd love to try to find a way to do this. Uh, but this is going to be the height of the season. And we have already been warned about the CDC that this could be a very, very high run-up in the cases. So, I mean, it's part of my, my position. I think we need to be consistent with all of our programs. And I would support the administration's position.
I, I would like to make a couple of comments. Uh, I know that we're all in a difficult situation, uh, first recognize the standards of the administration. I think part of the problem is, I was in school today and I see kids in the gym, elementary kids in the gym, going wide open. And so, I think that's what you're feeling from these basketball parents, is that these kids are going to school, participating in gym activity. And, um, they're, they're coming to you and wondering why, you know, can't play city-based basketball. Uh, so, I have an opinion on that, you know, it's just a philosophy that I feel like we're ready to play. But I certainly recognize your stance in that. And, um, I, I do, I do see that the parents in the, in the entire country have become resilient to this and are doing what's needed to make things happen. So, to me, the video streaming is not an issue. It should be just cut, cut out. And whoever two people are, if you do decide to play basketball, they can record it on at home. And then you just take away that, that budget issue or rate, having a rate of fee. But, um, I certainly see both viewpoints. And I do see that kids are probably putting a lot of pressure on their parents and on you that have, that have basketball season. So, uh, and then they see, they go to the fairground this weekend and they're all running out there and getting a corn dog or whatever. So, just want to make things, I'm not saying that we're above that. I'm just saying, they're just seeing decent things and they're confused as well.
Well, I think, one part, we have to, uh, find a way, I understand that you want more, uh, specifically to be without feeling like you need anything. But, uh, thank the mayor's turn to that. We have to be, if we talk about socialism, that's why I asked the question earlier about we're going to be able to enforce the, uh, young people to keep their mask on. We already know how, how young people are energetic. They want to be able to do something to me and I, but that's something that we're going to have to look at. I think it's a real life, unless we come up with kind of vaccine or something to help these folk in eighteen, it's going to be a real life that we're going to have to adjust to and live by until, until it's done time. I just, I don't know how many of y'all saw six minutes of that. I spit that white off of there. I see he got, he was using my mask. And if that mask, one of the ways that we continue to bring down and, and control it, if people keep their mask on, that's, that's one of the things that you're going to have to find out is that people will be willing to apply by what we need to do to maintain safety and make sure that people, safety with pain and COVID. That's something I'm, I'm asking one now. I have, uh, we got to do something now. We got a lot of empty people and they want to do something. And we're going to have to be able to do something to help them maintain.
I'll ask this question. Is this something that as we go into, you know, November, December, getting closer to January, could be visited at that time? Let's say we get into those long supply hours, having a huge conference and the virus and all that. Because I do share the mayor's concerns very much in terms of my gracious, uh, concerns with my favorite friend, my great uncle. Relative to safety, everything has to be our personal concern. But, if we get to further down the road, this is not, you know, it's not, looks like a huge concern to me.
Well, I mean, you're looking to start the registration.
Yes.
So, Mr. Jones, are you asking for a delay in the stadium at some point to keep them in the start program? Or are you talking about going in, starting the program and then canceling the rest of them? See, whatever you want.
I have, um, a comment about that. Councilman, uh, he said that, you know, sometimes we have to find a way. And, and I think that this, when we put things all on the line, we're, we're so open-ended. We will come, I know we will come. And let's just say, we're going to, you know, six months from now, we've got a lot of... So, we've, we're going to have to find a way to live in this world. And, uh, for children to have a life, I think you outline a very safe approach. I think parents can know, you can think of it again, but the residents, they cannot. Or else you'll have to take your child home. I think we give people enough credit sometimes. Um, I just think we need, if, we need, um, like, just tell them, I mean, what will be our endgame? When the governor says we can do it? When there's 15 less cases this week than where last week? You know, what will be the sign that we can start, uh, some type of life that, that gives life back to the community? That's, that's my home. We never, we don't know that, we never know whether this is going to stop. I realize we don't. But, since we're stuck in the middle, how do we, that's what I, I'm looking for now.
Awesome, my lady. And, uh, like I said, I want two people to come in and do a rotation thing. You know, like I said, as family, and lots of players for a while, come back out and there's somebody else for a while. But see, this is the thing that we have to look at, come out with a new thing. I think, um, I think everybody's impressed right now. And I know that, uh, that's one of the things to open back up, people on their own, their lives. But like I said, we're going to give one point, is that we have to be proactive, you know what I mean? So, this is the thing that we got to be able to do in the grand tour that, uh, you know, and, uh, I know we have to do, we think differently than young people do. So, I want to think about it. And everybody, if you've got young people, you've got to build a house for them so they got to react. So, we got to be able to maintain and manage what we do to protect our children in the future. So, that's, that's a big thing. So, uh, I think that we have to come up and go back to Mr. Jones saying, that they ain't going to start playing basketball until, um, January. Then, uh, I don't feel a few outside of COVID, but I know when the rain, they can't do ice shots. But, hey, we got to find a way. And I just look at it, we just got to, we call all our school system right now. They playing basketball, they playing, uh, the shooter's on a lot of the lanes. But, we're going to have a rec department. If we're going to have a rec department in the city, either we're going to continue operating in the city with a rec department or we're going to shut it down. But, going to have it for six months from now, we're going to open it back up, uh, a whole year. What are we going to do? So, we've got to look at that thing from our view. How can we maintain, how to keep our people socially and keep them healthy at the same time?
So, Mr. Gilmore, this is required for tomorrow night. We've got to move some of the balls. Because I've heard several of the recommendations.
I, no, not required for you to do tomorrow. If you're ready to go and say that you want to let the program go forward, it goes forward. If you say no, it doesn't.
Under what terms, you would envision? I guess I've heard that we're not going to be bringing, that we're going to get two tickets out. We're going to rotate those among the management members, you know, and given the volume, sometimes we're going to have to go back.
Can I just reflect that? Maybe we can get incentives to go forward, then some other more nitty-gritty details about what to bring or not to bring. Could be decided then, you know, video and money that are spent on it or, you know, whatever. Um, I think to tell you that you have incentives to go forward, so every, every question about it doesn't have to be answered.
Mayor, I, I understand that, but I think if we're going to go forward, we have to be very clear about how we're going forward with the program. So, you know, I think, uh, Councilman Allred's point about no video streaming is very good. I know Ms. Peterson had talked about the possibility of savings, but there's been no savings in leisure services. Every one of those programs we haven't had, there's also a revenue stream that is not committed for it. There has not been one employee in leisure services that have been furloughed or let go. See what I mean? So, the, the costs are still there relative to the program. Uh, and so, I guess my recommendation is if, if, uh, the season, since the council has said you authorized the program to go forward as laid out by Mr. Swan, without the video streaming. And then we see how it goes. I, I don't, and let me back up. I'm talking about seeing how it goes, like if we have problems with attendance and that type of stuff. Not where we are with COVID. I mean, you can't run a program like that. If we're going to go and Mr. Swan and his people need to know, it's time to go. It's time to register. It's time to line up. It's time to have that all set. Parents need to know that so they can make their arrangements and all that type of stuff. And as long as, as the, we have the cooperation, you know, from the coaches and the parents and the guardians, I think that would be, that would be fine. And we'll, we'll see what happens. And that would be my recommendation. And if you concur, and I suggest you concur with that and allow Mr. Swan to proceed.
Council members? I don't, I don't think that's going to be possible. You got to go one way or the other.
We got to go one way or the other.
Except for the player who attends, gets the ball, we up. Let them play.
I would not, I would not. The right side of the curve, I mean, the curve of neutral, your program. Thank you. Briefly, it's presentation, three D ones, presentation of the city's water first program, Mr. Smith.
Just so people can channel why Andrew Butler, carry this around for a second.
It is also, my eyes are what it used to be, someone stand over here, next to the power points, I can make sure I'm following along with y'all, okay? Some source of adjustments here. Uh, Mayor Council, as you are aware, the city of Perry has been pursuing for a number of years now, uh, what is called a water first designation. This is one of the primary planning designations bestowed by the state and the cities for excellence in water stewardship. Uh, you also recall, we've discussed this before, I believe, that there are four primary planning designations the state bestows, that is the GIG, the housing team, that is Main Street, that's planned first, and that's water first. The city currently has three of those, uh, and now we actually have the fourth. We learned last week, I guess it was, that we were bestowed, um, and designated as a water first community, so, um, I, I think going through this process, it's been pretty complicated, you know, you've put forth a very involved application, that is reviewed by the state, that's reviewed by current water first communities, and if you're deemed worthy, then you move to the next stage, which is a site visit to your community, where you give a rather in-depth presentation that kind of tracks along with your application, um, and a site that's associated with that to one of your water facilities. Again, that is reviewed by other planned first communities and by some of our state partners like EPD, DCA, and GFO, who actually administer the program. So it's a very involved process, and again, I think to be very proud of our staff and our partners in ESG in regards to the way this came together. Uh, it was, again, a very difficult process, a lot that went into it, uh, but ultimately I think what we came out with is something that you and the rest of the community can be very proud of. As part of the site visit, as I mentioned, we did a presentation to the folks that were in attendance from around the state. I think it's a very good presentation, um, it distills down a lot of what the city is currently doing in regards to stormwater, water, and wastewater operations, which are the three primary focus areas of the water first program. After the presentation, the mayor's like, oh, this is a good presentation, I'm going to give that to mayor, or give that to the rest of council, whatever, I thought that was a great idea, it's a good work, so what you have for you tonight, hack it for, the hard copy is the actual presentation that was presented that day during the site visit, um, it's the complete, full shebang, as they say, what I'll be presenting to you tonight, and then the, the subsequent work session, it's going to be that presentation edited a bit, uh, and kind of cut and hacked, so it's not so long, I think it ran a little bit over an hour, um, the initial site visit, so I don't want to take up so much time. Any questions about where we are with water first? Great, go ahead, get into it then. I think before any sort of lengthy utility discussion, particularly folks that aren't necessarily, um, familiar with the city of Perry, it's kind of set the stage. For us, that was kind of looking at where we are in regards to service delivery areas. We have four city limits, almost twenty-eight square miles, where we provide, um, whole host of services, and then if you look at the broader picture, the bigger city, our service area as designated to our service delivery strategy, which is something that has to do with the state here, if I'm here, is one hundred and ten square miles. Uh, so you can see that we have a lot of room to grow, and growing we are. Most of the growth that we're seeing here in the city of Perry, it's manifested itself in single-family residential permitting destruction. Uh, you will, I'm sure you all are familiar with, since 2010, uh, we've seen a very significant increase over the years in regards to that type of permitting, with last year being the best year we've ever had in regards to single-family home starts, and the US Census Bureau this past July named the city of Perry the seventh fastest-growing city in the state of Georgia. Uh, so the growth is here, and obviously in providing utility services, uh, that presents a lot of challenges. In regards to the growth, of course, with the single-family residential permit, also a significant commercial, uh, growth, but what are some of the drivers behind that growth? You know, what are, what are some of the mitigating factors in regards to this? Our industry, we have a very healthy, uh, industrial base here in the city of Perry, we have some very large employers, uh, three of those, Sandler, Purdue Farms, and Free Delay, all in the past eighteen months have announced significant expansions of investments in the community, created jobs, that type of thing, so that remains a very healthy employment base for us. We have very quality school system, the Houston County Board of Education consistently lauded as one of the top, uh, school systems in the state, and we also have a very excellent private school option in the Westfield School. Of course, the big dog on campus, if you will, is Robbins Air Force Base, Houston County, City of Perry, really, middle Georgia would not be where it is today, where a Dr. Robbins Air Force Base is the big economic driver for us, is the largest single-site employer in the state, with over twenty-four thousand people working in the games on a daily basis. And then again, that drives a whole lot of oversight. And then quality of life, this is something that's a little bit more specific, I think, to the city of Perry, is something that all of you have committed to in regards to providing that high quality of life for people that move here, and I think that's a big part of what's attracted people here. Despite all the growth and the challenges and issues that presents to us, we have done an excellent job in regards to utility service provision. You can see we've been lauded over the years for various, um, you know, excellence in regards to water, wastewater, stormwater, uh, you can see we've won some very significant awards over the years, including top operations, uh, you know, testing water, distribution system there, all those types of things, so we're doing a very good job and handling it, still providing a superior product to our customers. One of the primary reasons, in my opinion at least, and I think you all probably agree, that we've been able to provide such superior services, is our partnership with ESG Operations. ESG Operations and the city of Perry partnered together in two thousand and six to take over our water, wastewater, and natural gas operations. Uh, it's my understanding, here obviously, but in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, when that initial partnership came about, we did see some significant cost savings, we also saw some streamlining in regards to, um, provision of services, efficiencies, that type of thing. Uh, over the years, we continue to take advantage of that opportunity, uh, with our partnership, uh, most of it with the added personnel, finding certified water, wastewater operators is incredibly difficult, leaving that up to the professionals has been very beneficial for us, a lot less of headaches, of staff, of course, uh, and then being able to take advantage of their extensive network of professionals and expertise has proven invaluable. You know, having all the in-house, uh, expertise and knowledge that they have with ESG, being able to take advantage of that, instead of paying high-priced consulting engineers, is incredibly beneficial, and then taking advantage of some of the bulk purchasing opportunities associated with chemicals and water, wastewater operators, that type of thing, so it's been very good for us. Why do we, the city, want to become a water first community? I think it's so we can continue along the lines of providing superior services. And some of the subtitles, like the subtext to that is water stewardship, the reason we have become a water first community is because of our excellent stewardship of water resources, a lot of that's focused on stormwater and making sure that the water that leaves the city of Perry's discharge and state waters is quality, there's nothing there that shouldn't be. Growth management, again, going back to the growth, being a water first community commits us to, uh, being a high performer in regards to planning our infrastructure and making sure that we manage growth in an effective, efficient manner. Quality of life, I touched on that, something you're very committed to. It's kind of funny, in the site visit with the folks that came in from the state on site visit day, I busted out some undergrad stuff and mentioned Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? So again, at the base, at the base of human existence, you have food, shelter, and water. If you don't have those three things, nothing else matters. Uh, so really, when we're getting into providing critical essential of government services, water, right at the top. Long-range planning, something on excellent, and we're a plan-first community, uh, this just goes right hand in hand with that, and we're always very supportive of our state partners, the programs and opportunities and resources that they provide to us, it's always good to take advantage of these, and being a water first community, we've been able to hopefully experience some cost savings in the future in regards to financing a lot of the infrastructure projects that we're already looking at doing. Um, and it, it's just good to be at the forefront of municipalities and counties in regards to partnering with our state partners, and then of course, superior service delivery, always something we're going to be committed to. If you look at the application, I mean, happy to provide to a company, uh, it's broken down, it's really four primary areas we're looking at becoming a water first community, stormwater management, water supply, wastewater, and of course, planning. And this, this presentation essentially tracks that. So, talk about stormwater tonight, when you're talking about stormwater, you can kind of understand where you are in the greater ecosystem, the greater framework of what, here in the state of Florida. In the city of Perry, located in the Old Moby River Basin, lower Old Moby watershed. Basically, what happens is all of our stormwater flows into one of four primary discharge waters, beginning in Cree, Perry Grande, Mosque Creek, Flat Creek, that flows into the Old Moby River, Old Moby River flows into the Ultimah River, which ultimately ends up in the Atlantic Ocean. So, understanding the broader scope of where we are as a community and how it impacts all the communities downstream from us and ultimately the ocean. The city first got serious about stormwater back in two thousand and six. This is where the genesis of our stormwater program that we have today, and it sets us up and puts us in a very good position to achieve what we've been able to achieve as a city. That's our watershed protection plan, again, adopted in two thousand and six, it essentially looked at where we were as a community in regards to stormwater, it planned out for a number of years, how we got, or how we get to where we need to be as a community of stormwater. And if you look at it, it's quite fascinating, again, I wasn't here, but you look back at it, the city basically did everything that was outlined in that plan, and yeah, that's, that's a difficult thing to do, it's not something you see oftentimes, but we did that, because of that, we're in much better shape than we probably would have been without it. In two thousand and twelve, so from two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve, the stormwater management, stormwater protection plan was our primary guiding document in regards to stormwater service provision. After two thousand and twelve, we became an MS four community, a municipal separate storm sewer community. This is something that EPD administered at the state level, and a lot of requirements associated with that, so as part of funding those, adhering to those requirements, we actually started the same year, two thousand and twelve, our stormwater utility, so that everyone is able, that everyone's taking advantage of our stormwater system, pays it to their fair share in order to provide that service. Currently, we have a little over seventy-one hundred stormwater customers that pay into that utility. It's based on ERUs, of course, an ERU is essentially a detached, single-family residential structure, house, which is the vast majority of our customers here in the city of Perry. They pay five dollars per billing, which is five dollars per month, to receive stormwater services, and then for commercial industrial customers, they pay based on square footage and pervious surface, and Chad mentioned that earlier with the restaurant project, but it's capped at four hundred and sixty dollars per billing, per month. Again, we want to make sure that we're providing services in an equitable fashion, and that commercial industrial clients here in the city are not paying more than their fair share. And that, of course, you see here, you're on their familiar budget we operate with, our stormwater fund this year has an operating budget of around seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. With a very robust infrastructure network in regards to stormwater, uh, it's, it's getting bigger and bigger, this is, this is becoming more and more of a focus for the state, and so it's becoming more and more of a focus for us here in the city, to adhere to a lot of the requirements and things that are coming down from the state. Over forty-three hundred catch bases, you can see all this here, I'm going to loop you through it, but last year, we received over three hundred calls for service from, um, from our customers in regards to stormwater issues, that we're able to go in there and address for them. Getting a little bit more into our MS four permit, it was our watershed protection plan, now it's our stormwater MS four permit that guides what we do in regards to stormwater. This permit is essentially broken down into six primary areas, and then of the six areas, there are thirty-six, what we call BNP's, I'm sure you first mentioned those before, we like to draw around acronyms, that's one of those, but those are what, those are the guiding principles in regards to providing a effective and efficient stormwater program as a city. Making sure that the water hits the ground, ultimately is discharged into the environment as quality, and there's no pollutants getting into the environment that should not be. You all show you very, very good reason, and I meant to default place a premium on this, in regards to education of the public, and making sure that we provide information to people, with a very robust framework in regards to providing information to stormwater customers, most of that, of course, is digital, with a very robust website, with stormwater, dedicated stormwater presence, uh, we have, of course, our city newsletters out digital, we do provide information, our utility billing, we provide printed pamphlets to, um, schools, to other resources in the community, and in a primary way, we've been able to engage with our citizens as a link in the York Harry Act. And going back to the three hundred and three service calls that we saw, the vast majority of those were submitted on the app, so that's another very valuable tool for us, not only to receive those work orders and service requests, but to put out information. Something that was exciting, I, I think was really cool, and I think the people that were there for the site visit that day thought it was cool as well, was y'all's recent partnership with some of our primary partners here in the city to establish graphics for modern schools at their facilities. So we have partnered with Board of Education, Board of Commissioners, the Air Force Authority, and the Westfield School to place in those facilities, uh, specifically tailored graphic displays that are geared towards that specific site and for the specific clientele that utilize those sites. So for, and we place these in all schools, uh, and you can see, for the elementary schools, that type of thing, we utilize, we have fun characters, uh, we kind of put it in the wording that children can understand, and for instance, at the courthouse, it would be geared towards adults, because that's usually used in the courthouse. Gearing it towards the demographics we're trying to reach, and trying to reach all the demographics in the city of Perry. And you can see that, for example, here at Tucker Elementary School, it actually has a Tucker Elementary School site, water goes at the inlet, goes into the stormwater pond, ultimately discharges, maybe decrease, and ultimately gets into the ocean. So trying to bring that educational to part of the people, and specifically trying to get to folks early and early age before they establish bad habits. And again, a lot of what we do is focus on children, and educate the youth in our community, uh, getting them into those good habits, making them understand that, you know, the litter you throw down, the stuff you might pour down the storm drain, ultimately could have an impact on the greater environment. Outside of education, we do have a number of public involvement items that we take advantage of, one of the primary things we've been able to do here, and it doesn't always seem like a stormwater, um, thing, but it ultimately is, is our neighborhood cleanup weeks. This is something the Perry Housing Team has been leading since two thousand and fourteen, we do cleanup weeks in the spring and fall, in targeted neighborhoods, and we bring in a lot of volunteers, there's a lot of educational stuff that goes along with it, they've been fantastic events, and continue to be fantastic events. On average, we pull three tons of trash out of those neighborhoods per those, per each one of those events. That's a lot of trash, um, that's a lot of waste that's not getting into the stormwater system, so you have the aesthetic value of these cleanups, and then you also have the stormwater value associated with these cleanups. Usually coincide, you know, the neighborhood cleanups is cleanup week, that's something that's through the Department of Public Works, the solid waste division, where they'll actually, basically pick up anything our solid waste customers want to put by the side of the road for a week, uh, and that includes things we won't usually pick up, like tires, chemicals, solids, paints, that type of thing, so we'll pick that stuff up, and we'll make sure that it's properly disposed of. And on average, and this, this can be a big, big event, every year we get, rolls around solid waste, like, oh man, how are we going to pull it off this year, but do, uh, we pick up almost fifty tons of waste during those cleanup weeks, and that's waste that's not going into our stormwater system, it's not going into our groundwater recharge areas, we're a groundwater community, that's super important to us. And then, of course, our group pick up, we pick up on a weekly basis, over twenty-four hundred tons picked up last year, again, and I, I feel like I'm being a bit redundant, but that stuff is getting, it's not going to get to our environment, it's stuff that's not going to go in there and clog up our storm drains, our storm pipes, that type of thing, so a lot less maintenance on our part because we're doing these proactive You know, there's, there's a whole, and I think the state is very impressed with the whole range of activities we've put together in the city here towards improving our stormwater system. We offer free residential recycling, forty-six hundred customers, that's about sixty-five percent of our solid waste customers actually participate in recycling, and in two thousand and nineteen, seven hundred and twenty-eight hundred percent of it's plugged in, and we have a storm drain sticker program, it's the mayor, their model, sticker, uh, stick on storm drains to remind people not to dump stuff into the storm system. Ultimately, the purpose of having a stormwater program, stormwater management program, is so that illicit discharges are not discharged into state waters, again, this Again, those four primary waters we talked about earlier. We have in place a very robust detection and elimination program for this. We monitor 20 sites in the state, I'm sorry, in the city, and we, uh, go there and do sampling quarterly. Dry and wet weather sampling, because that can impact the sample. And we're looking for various types of, uh, well, key water quality indicators, uh, dissolved, oxygen, people coal perform, that type of stuff typically finding in the water that could be indicative of some sort of illicit discharge. And if there is an illicit discharge, try and spot where that's coming from and eliminate it before it hits state waters. Despite all of our efforts, we do have some impaired waters, and that's not necessarily because of the city of Perry, you know, a lot of this is from upstream. But we have inherent segments of Flat Creek and Monster Creek, that is where levels of contaminants have exceeded the state allowable limits. And we have in place a monitoring program for those to make sure they don't get worse. Uh, or if they do get worse, try and put in place some sort of measures to mitigate that. We, of course, monitor all the destruction sites in the city. We have very robust, uh, mechanisms in place for this, making sure that any time lands being disturbed and we're aware of it, we're checking that, making sure there are hearings for BNP's we've put in place. And we take enforcement actions up to, including find and stop work orders should the need arise. Last year, we actually took enforcement actions, uh, at 12 different sites. Once the structure's completed, we still maintain, oh, we still, um, regularly take a look at any structures that was put in place during the construction process, making sure they're still working effectively and it's not negatively impacting those downstream. Something I think you'll also be very proud of, again, this gets back to a whole comprehensive stormwater program that we have, is some of our pollution provision, good housekeeping measures we have in place. We're working with GIS to eliminate all of our stormwater structures, we have a ton of them. Uh, but once we have this, it will help streamline our monitoring processes and help streamline our inspection and maintenance processes. We, of course, do routine inspection of all infrastructure. We're looking to integrate Hyper Weather More into our stormwater operations. That's actually the backend, uh, work order system for stormwater operations, specifically geared towards MS4 communities and helping us with all the recording requirements associated with that. We swept over 1,100 miles of streets last year, so picked up 266 bags of litter on the side of roads, and as I already mentioned, over 2,000 tons of yard rures picked up. One of the primary ways in which y'all have put in place codes that work towards improving our stormwater system is through our land management ordinance, and that's through most of our development design standards and in our stormwater management ordinance. For development design standards, a lot of this is geared towards breaking up impervious surface. You know, we don't necessarily want this huge island, a paved, um, area in the city. So trying to break that up and trying to reduce it ultimately. We establish lower parking minimums. If people want to go over the parking minimum, they have to incorporate some sort of low-impact development requirements, like impervious favors, that type of thing. There are trade-offs in regards to if you want to provide alternative transportation parking, like bicycle parking. And for parking that's not often utilized, like for simply purposes of overflow, making sure that those are not impactful and oftentimes not even allowing impervious surface to be utilized for them. We have in place pretty broad regional landscape requirements. We do require landscaping plans for commercial development. Recently, this year, we required the installation of rain sensors for irrigation in commercial establishments. You know, no one needs to be irrigated when it's raining. And then, you know, landscape parking islands, street trees, permanent bucket drainage, tree trunks, all that type of stuff is designed to break up the impervious surface and soften things up and allow the natural stormwater system to work where it should. The stormwater management ordinance essentially formalizes and codifies the structures and authorities that we need as a city to be an MS4 community. That's really what that is. And if you look at it, it establishes water quality standards, establishes flow standards in regards to our stormwater system. It looks at, of course, we look at all the land serving activities here in the city. And then we're trying to protect key environmental areas like wetlands and, and groundwater recharge areas with that as well. Something we're hoping to get more and more into, and I think the state's actually gonna require us to get more and more into, is green infrastructure, low-impact development, um, guidelines. We put something together this year, the state just this past month approved it and accepted it. Uh, so we're applying in our, of course, GI ID program. And this encourages various types of development that work towards more environmentally sensitive options in regards to stormwater. So again, not just, not just a curb gutter, inlet, stormwater pond, but looking at doing some more creative things that actually allow stormwater to kind of do what it should be doing anyway before development came in. That's stormwater. I'll get back to y'all at subsequent work session for water and wastewater. Do y'all have any questions about this? Any other questions? All right, thank you all.
Hey, Mr. Smith, uh, your presentation was very well received by the review panel. And like you say, we have been selected as a Water First community, so it has far-reaching effects on our community. Thanks to all the folks in public works that make this happen on a regular basis. The Houston Dean, thanks for there, push him, you guys do. Item four, council member item, Mr. Jones, Mr. Martin. Mayor Board General, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Albrecht?
Sir.
Thank you. This new meeting plane for us additional this evening?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
It's a conditional meeting for us this evening.
Well, since Mr. Gilmore's not here, I thought it'd just maybe change this.
Not only is he a good presenter, but he's also a needy. Moving on. Mark, you can stand by this. Mr. Dean?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warden?
I'll listen to him.
Chief Mark?
Nothing to know, sir.
Chief Lynn?
Nothing to know, sir, thank you.
Mr. Swan?
Left foot.
Ms. Fitz?
Yes, sir.
Did I, was there a left button there? I think it was hard to left. And this is McBurney, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, if there's nothing else to come for us this evening, I would remind everybody that our pre-council meeting is in this room tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. And then we will have our normal meeting of the Perry City Council at 6 o'clock. So we appreciate your interest and participation if we stand in charge.